A safety action plan and an active transportation plan to eliminate with the purpose of doing what I just framed up, right? To eliminate those severe and fatal roadway crashes using a safe system approach. And so the safe systems approach is kind of a more holistic, more multidisciplinary approach, but it's also really targeted instead of at all crashes towards these fatal and severe ones. We can do this because fatal and severe crashes tend to happen in the same places over and over again. It's called our high injury network. So it's really, there's really a lot of science behind this approach. One thing that I really want to make sure I stress when I'm talking about this plan is this program, this SS4A or Safe Streets and Roads for All program had two kinds of grants that you could go after. You could do planning grants, which is what we did, and/or you could do implementation grants. Well, when we're talking about federal discretionary grants, usually what people are talking about are implementation grants. That's the bigger money for projects. Under this program, they were, they were kind of smart. They set it up, they wanted people to have a plan first and make sure they really knew which projects were the most important ones to move forward before moving into implementation grants. And so now that we are done with this plan, which I'm going to describe to you in a little bit more detail in just a moment, that is a next step that the city can consider. And not just the city, actually other participants in this process. And I'll tell you about them in just a minute as well. So we've got a plan document. It is complete and finalized. And on the slide, just kind of goes through the chapters that are in that report. I also want to point out that there's an active transportation plan, whole appendix. That's an active transportation plan and a non-motorized design guide. So what are the right kinds of facilities for making sure people can really bike safely on roadways? Not just put the wrong kind of facility on the wrong kind of road. You can go on to the next slide. This plan was prepared with a lot of robust public engagement. It was also guided by a technical advisory committee that included internal staff, internal staff from the city as well as external, excuse me, as well as external parties as well, like our LA DOTD district folks and our MPO and other local entities as well. We went out to a number of events and we hosted some open houses as well and met with members of the community. There's a few pictures from some of them on the slide and it's all detailed in the report, asking people to give us input about where they saw problems and what suggestions they had. In some cases, that validates the data that we have. In other cases, it tells us about something we didn't know about because maybe it's a new situation or there are near misses that we need to be aware of. So lots of public engagement guided the development of this plan. But on the next slide, you'll see it isn't just that public engagement. There's a lot of data and science behind it too. We like to say that it is both community driven and data driven. And we put those things together so that we can come up with a plan that's both a reflection of the community and also backed by science. Just a few little notes on the slide. So we do consider previous planning efforts because we know there has been a lot of work actually done in recent years around Lake Charles, existing conditions analyses, and of course that crash data that I mentioned earlier amongst other things. You can continue. So what's the meat of what's in this plan document? Our team of planners and engineers have put together 22 physical infrastructure safety projects that we believe will have that impact of eliminating severe and fatal crashes. They're based on your high injury network. For each of those projects, we have kind of half-page summary sheets that really link together the crash problems that are occurring with the solution that we recommend with maps, photographs, countermeasures, and the percent reduction in those types of crashes that we expect to see if they are implemented. In addition to those, one of the cool things about this program is that it, it's not just projects. You can actually, through these implementation grants, you could also ask for money to do education or something maybe that law enforcement needs to help support their efforts. So there's 16 non-infrastructure actions also recommended in the plan. There are also 313 active transportation projects. I know that sounds like a lot, but that's kind of the build-out network and it's many, many sidewalk projects, just filling in sidewalk gaps. So what you're seeing mapped on the screen there are the 22, those are the safety roadway projects. And I believe on the next slide, I've got that active transportation network and then also the sidewalk gap projects as well. And so these are all mapped in the plan as well as tables that define the limits and just very high-level, planning level cost estimates, which can assist your team of engineers and your public works department to identify, because they are now prioritized, and help you build up a capital improvements program based around some of these projects. If you want to go on to the next slide, just a little bit about that non-motorized facility design guide. It's an appendix. It's kind of the background to how we got to the recommendations that we made, but it's also a resource for them and a resource for y'all in the future. If you think a facility should be a certain way, you can look at them and say, yeah, that is the kind of road that this facility belongs on. And so that's kind of what's in the document itself. On the next slide, there are still some other things that are, that need to be done. We recommend, so there are some reporting requirements. If you are to do the implementation grant, you, we would like you to consider how you might consider reporting out these changes over time. This can be done in a lot of different ways, just working with your partners at LA DOTD and your MPO and finding out the number of fatalities each year and the number and rate of vulnerable road users. Those are our biking and walking crashes and those serious injury crashes and seeing if they go, if they're going up or going down as we implement projects. On the next slide, so this is where we are now. One of the requirements, so of course it's a federal discretionary grant. There's a checklist and we have to make sure we're meeting all of them. And one of those items on that checklist is this. A requirement for funding eligibility is a public commitment to the vision statement by a high-ranking official or governing body is required for implementation funding. So that's y'all, that's a high-ranking official or a high-ranking governing body like a city council. This can include, so you, you have different legal instruments that you use for these things. It can be a resolution, a policy, an ordinance, an executive order, et cetera, et cetera, and the official adoption of that plan. So essentially, they're trying not to be prescriptive about exactly who has to do it and exactly what mechanism you need to use. But in order to be eligible for those future funds and to complete our obligations under the existing grant, we are asking for your favorable adoption of a resolution of support for our vision statement, which is our vision for the future is to eliminate all traffic deaths and serious injuries on Lake Charles roadways by 2050 and for adoption of the plan by resolution. I think on the next slide, yeah. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. I believe the intent is to be on the October 1st council agenda with that resolution prepared for y'all to offer your, you know, our ask is for your favorable adoption on that day. We have the plan up on our project website. We have received no public comments to date. And so we are prepared to finalize that plan and ask for your favorable adoption of that. I think I have one final slide which has the QR code to that website. So anybody who wants to go and check out that plan, it is located there. There is a link to this site on your city's homepage as well. That is the end of my presentation. I am happy to take questions.
You will be applying on behalf of the city?
That is yet to be determined. That is a possibility if you all, if that is a decision that the city decides to move forward with.
Well, what is the other option?
This plan sets up many different projects that y'all can implement with your own, with your own general fund. There's many projects on state roads that can be done with, with state funds. There are other discretionary grant programs as well. So there are a lot of different options for funding sources going forward. And one of those options that previously didn't exist is the $5 billion that was in this particular program that y'all are set up to go after if you choose to do so.
What's the general timeline?
So we understand that the notice of funding opportunity for this next round of grant applications is going to come somewhere between January and March. They usually give about two months before they're due. So it's always a very good idea to be getting your grant, your grant application ready in advance if that's a decision that y'all want to move forward with.
So there's no restrictions. We can use this with a project that we already got established, correct?
As long as that project is a safety project and it's linked to our high injury network. It doesn't have to be on the high injury network, but it has to show a relationship to these projects that we've identified in here and particularly the high injury network where these severe and fatal crashes are occurring. And so when I say that, I mean, it could be a bike path that's not on a road, but it could provide an opportunity for those people who are, you know, getting hurt or at risk on that roadway and take them off of that roadway. So there has to be, so trying to show that relationship. Strong applications, of course, you know, show a strong relationship.
Herman Stevens, Lake Charles City Engineering Department. If you want to pursue the grant funds, you have to pursue the projects somewhat as they're listed in the program. However, outside of grant funding, let's say city general funding, we could implement any of these things. We can tweak them, we can modify them. So even if there were no grant funds, I mean, we have hundreds of projects in here that could be implemented across the city.
Well, I guess what, what drew my attention is the sidewalk part. How do we make that relational to our streets? Like we building streets now. Can we get that grant to, to supplement some of that funding for sidewalks?
I'm not sure that it would be simple to integrate or bolt these into other projects. That's something we can work on going forward.
Anybody got any other question?
Mr. President, I, I am appreciative for Ms. Van Norman and Mr. Stevens' involvement in the plan. Certainly support their efforts. I appreciate what you guys have done also to put together the safety action plan. I'd be willing to add that resolution to next week's agenda meeting if other members of the council agree.
Mr. Young, if I may, it's on the agenda right now. It's number 10.
Fantastic.
Coming up for action. We were just trying to explain to you that this was a planning grant. It allows us to adopt this by resolution. It'll come up next week for final action for the resolution. But it also allows us, as they've mentioned, to go after implementation grants to help implement these projects. So you got to have a planning document to go after the other funding sources to implement. But I think what they were saying is, is that we could also use this and if we just want to fund it with city funds, we could and we may. But we're all going to go after some additional grant funding for implementation.
Love to see grant funds pursued first, but city funds used if necessary.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You need to say something?
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Renee, can you tell me the name of the next presenter again?
I don't know the name of the next, but it's, it's Ready Matt.
Ready Max?
Ready Matt.
Ready Matt is our next presentation. Yes, sir.
So my name is Chuck Stenbeck. I'm the founder and principal owner of a company called Ready Matt US LLC. We are a manufacturer of airfield damage recovery systems in support of the US military and our foreign allies with a just enough, just-in-time technology to support our warfighters for airfield damage recovery. So imagine you're operating an airbase at one of our FOBs, one of our foreign operating bases in Guam or somewhere like that, and your runway's been attacked and now you've got bomb craters in your runway. What do you do? Well, this is a technology I spent better than a decade developing in conjunction with the Air Force, with their support, with the Air Force Civil Engineering Center and the Engineering Research and Development Center, a division of the Army Corps of Engineers in Vicksburg, Mississippi. And we developed a technology to support them with just that. Now, just enough, just-in-time, cost-effective methodology to patch that runway and get those planes back in the air or recovered, whichever the case may be. And we manufacture that and service that right here in Lake Charles. We started it some time back and now the business is just growing exponentially. We market the product through our distributor, AMS Industries, which is later an equity shareholder in the company as well. And they're in Charlotte. They do the back office work, sales, some of the kidding, and we do the manufacturing here. This is a full-blown service company. It's not only do we manufacture the items, machine the anchoring systems, sell the tools, but we provide the training. We provide the software and the drones that go up and assess the damage of the runway, tell them how to fix it, where to fix it, what goes where, everything they need. We send, if we sell these to one of our allies, like in the case of Japan, Saudi Arabia, Qatar, we send our engineers over, they, we sell them the product and we go over and we train them. This is all conducted right here. In the last 24 months, just the business is just exploding. We lease a facility right down here at the end of Ryan Street from Lake Charles Harbor and Tomlinville District. I've been in there probably 12 or 13 years. And we have multiple very large contracts that we're negotiating. Now, we've got to plan for expansion. We can't wait when these customers need this stuff. They don't need it five years from now, they need it months from now. And we're very close to signing a five-year contract with our DLA. That's the Defense Logistics Agency. That'll be a five-year contract for about quarter of a billion dollars. We've got several other contracts similar in size pending. Be thousands of these systems. So we'd like to maintain this manufacturing base here. Now, my partners have wanted to move it to Charlotte where they're at, but it turns out I found a facility here that I think will be suitable for us. It's right over here off Highway 14. Many of you guys might know it as the old Southwest beverage. Somebody, some people have told me it was the old Sears building. It's a 48,000 square foot facility. It's been recently refurbished, move-in ready. We've made an offer on the building, they've accepted it, but I understand that it's zoned mixed-use. So we're here to ask you for, if I've got the terminology correct, zoning variance is, you know, if I'm saying that right, to light manufacturing, which consists of, we've got some CNC machines that make the anchoring parts. We make the composite panels. That's what we'd like to do there. We're going to maintain this warehouse over here. We'll have two facilities and we would use this over here as our packaging and distribution center. And what we do manufacture here, we'd like to do in that facility over there. So that's a short of it. I've been a lifelong resident here since the early 80s, been living here 40 some odd years. We'd like to keep this here. We've identified a place to do it, but we need a little bit of help from the city to change this, this zoning.
Tell me your name again?
Chuck Stenbeck is my name.
Mr. Stenbeck.
Mm-hmm.
I understand what you, what you want to do, but we're going to have to put you in touch because you're going to have to go through planning and zoning first. We're the, we can be the after effect, so to speak. But the proper procedure would be for you to submit your application through planning and zoning. Goes through them first. If it be for some reason they deny you, you can appeal to the city council. You have a 15-day time period. Who can we direct them to, Jim?
Yeah, we'll be scheduling, we'll be scheduling a meeting with them in the planning office with Mr. Burgers. We understand he's got to go through that process, I believe. He understands that process. I believe he just wanted to kind of bring you guys up to date, what he was thinking about doing and his path forward if it all works out. But we'll be talking about either rezoning to light industrial or if it takes that or some other kind of conditional use permit in order to make this happen. But there's a little bit more homework that has to be done, you know, for the people in the area and what he's doing. But it sounded like a great project and we'll partner him with the planning department and work through that process.
Yes, I met with him and his family today. He hired about 25 local guys working in his field right now and they plan on if he was get the other field in industrial, it'd be another 25 guys that they hire and they can take care and get them back to everyday living. I don't want to say he, he take guys that need a little help. And I did a little research on them, it was hard for me to believe, I'm going to let him tell you.
Well, well, the labor pool, we have found a good labor pool through the correctional center here. We tend to, we call it a second chance program. They represent about 67% of our labor force. And we bring them in, we train them, we give them a skill and then they're at the end of their sentencing and then when they get out, you know, we help them get on their feet. And we found it to be a very good resource for labor here. And so we do that and we help, we do help the guys, you know, get re-acclimated in society if you would. So we give them full-time jobs, we get them a skill set and, and then when they get fully released and get back in society, we, we try to help them, you know, get a residence, get transportation, get back on their feet. We do do that, but we found that's a good source for labor and we've had great success with it. I don't, I don't keep statistics on it, but we've probably had a 70, 80% success rate for it and they probably represent better than 50% of our workforce, so.
Is there any emissions in this process?
No, no, we use what's called a clothes molding technique. So it's, you, you get a minor smell about like opening a can of paint, you know, so. But, but no, this stuff is not sprayed or anything like that, you know.
And I ask that because the, the area that you're going to be submitting to is a residential area and that will be one of the things that probably will be factored into whatever you produce over there.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I would, could make a suggestion to him to lock in. She said you made a bid on the property. Maybe to lock it in, you, this is just a suggestion. In your purchase agreement, make a contingent upon your zoning change. And then that way you can lock in that, that price and that, that property. And then once you, if the zoning has changed, then you can move forward on it.
Any, any questions?
Any questions?
No, but we do appreciate your consideration of Lake Charles and I think it's a lot better choice than Charlotte, so we hope we can keep you here.
Well, we'd like, see, I live here, so we'd like to stay here. But I don't make all the decisions. Obviously, I influence it, but sometimes, you know, you can get overridden.
So that, I, from a timing standpoint, I think we've probably missed the deadline for the October zoning meeting, so we wouldn't be able to come up till November. Is that correct or are we still borderline be able to get it on October?
Mr. Rutherford, we're going to try to partner these two together this week so they can sit down and try to work through that, put them on the next agenda possible. Yeah, timing, timing is critical because that's why we like this facility, because it's move-in ready. And we're, this one particular contract with DLA, that is supposed to be awarded any day. We've already been, this has been going on for about nine months. We've also got another award coming up with Taiwan. That's supposed to hit, you know, fourth quarter this year and they're going to want delivery next year. So we've got to move. We don't, we don't have a lot of time, so. So yeah, sooner we can get in front of zoning, the better, but we appreciate you. Thank you.
And we help any way we can.
All right, thank you.
Now, Ms. Renee?
Public notices hereby given in compliance with Louisiana revised statute 4219.1 that the city council of the city-elect Charles, Louisiana, will meet an open and public session on the 5th day of November 2025 at 5:30 PM at the regular meeting place of said city council, City Hall 326 Pujo Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, to consider calling an election to be held in the city-elect Charles, Louisiana on April 18th, 2026 for renewal of three ad valorem taxes, for one, maintenance of public buildings, streets and bridges in the city, two, maintenance of playgrounds and recreation centers and equipment thereof, and three, maintaining pay increases and starting salaries for employees of the police, fire, public works and other departments of the city and for maintenance of the police department three platoon system. Public hearings and ordinance, auditing demolition and authorizing the city-elect Charles to enter into an agreement for demolition of a structure located at 1814 Eastern Street, Willie LaFleur and Josephine LaFleur owners. Another demolition at 410 North Simmons Street, Pamela Marie Swain owners, subject to a tax sale to State Louisiana. Another demolition at 1610 Graham Street, Alan J. Mitchell owner. Another demolition at 513 South Prater Street and 515 South Prater Street, Georgiana Thomas Mayo and Simon Thomas Jr. owners. Ordinances for final action and ordinance authorizing the city-elect Charles to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the North Lake Charles Economic Development District for the purpose of appropriating funds totaling $650,000 over a four-year period to assist with the operations of the district and further providing office space for the district. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive and responsible bid and authorizing the city-elect Charles to enter into an agreement to purchase road-based limestone aggregate per specifications for use by the public works department. An ordinance creating the positions of chief of administration and chief of operations with the administrative division of the Lake Charles Fire Department and to provide for the qualifications, duties and responsibilities for such positions and other related matters. An ordinance authorizing the city-elect Charles to accept Kramer Court, Rutledge Court, Fletcher Court and Hemsdale Court in Autumn Crest Phase II subdivision, including public right-of-way drainage, water and sewer lines, sewer and traffic control devices for ownership and maintenance by the city-elect Charles. The city-elect Charles will not take ownership of the detention ponds. An ordinance authorizing the renewal of the professional services agreement between the city-elect Charles and the PCOR group. Resolutions, a resolution authorizing the city-elect Charles to adopt the Lake Charles Safety Action Plan as part of the US Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Initiative. A resolution setting date for public hearing and consideration of the Lake Charles Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a request for a variance in order to eliminate the required permanently installed buffer fence around dumpster within a mixed-use zoning district at 2604 Lake Street. A resolution setting date for public hearing and consideration of the Lake Charles Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a request for a variance in order to construct four duplex dwelling units, eight units total, while one maintaining an existing driveway encroaching required 15-foot buffer yard along East Property Line and two constructing a driveway less than 150 feet from the nearest intersecting street within a neighborhood zoning district at the southeast corner of East Street at Bilbo Street. A resolution authorizing the city-elect Charles to advertise to receive seal bids for project number CP3414 Southwest WTP Backup Power Improvements with a companion ordinance. A resolution selecting the Farmer Capital One Tower site for the indoor sports facility. Such selection conditioned upon applicable state and federal funding partners approval of the site. Ordinances for introduction, introduction of an ordinance amending Section 5-20314C of Chapter 24 of the Lake Charles Zoning Ordinance relative to facade building materials by removing N14B1. Introduction of an ordinance amending Section 20-67 of Chapter 20 of the Code of Ordinances of the City-elect Charles to establish a school zone along the 3,500 block of Patrick Street with all other appropriate signage and pavement legends extending between one to two blocks from the University United Methodist Church of Lake Charles Day School perimeter and to establish crosswalks at all established school crossings. and to establish crosswalks at all established school crossings. And that's all that I have. The last item on here is an, is a companion.
At this point, Ms. Renee, I'd like to make an objection to add number fourteen to the agenda, to this agenda.
The resolution selecting the Farmer Capital One?
Yes.
Site?
Mr. President, I would like to keep that one.
Okay, we can vote on it. But before we vote, we'll go to a discussion. That's proper protocol, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So at this time, does anybody have anything they want to discuss about why this shouldn't be added to the agenda?
I have a lot of things to discuss, Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
First thing is first, let me, let me, let me work backwards. When did we discuss as a council to make the Capital One Tower location the location of the sports complex?
We discussed that when we met each of the council members and went through the seven sites that were evaluated.
We never had to come back before the council to vote on it for it to be a recommendation. That's not, that's not a protocol.
I mean, I'm not understanding your question.
So for it to get on the agenda. I guess my question I'm saying, because I think everybody know where I'm going with it. We're gonna address the elephant in the room. At some point, we all talked about the Fitz and Rider Road area being for the sports complex. Why was it never bought before the council, the way we bringing this tonight as far as the Capital One Tower?
You talking about now? Because the Fitz and Rider site, the appraisal came in over the asking price of, under the asking price of the property.
So for the, okay, so I'm I'm get to the appraisal part two. I guess my question I'm saying, we never had to have a dis, we never had an opportunity to bring the site that was submitted originally for the sports complex. It never made it to the agenda.
Let me see if I can go through this. We went through, when the council came on and the new administration came on, there was no site set for this particular project. So we received requests to look at and evaluate several sites, which includes the Fitz and Rider site. All total, we evaluated seven sites. And then we first evaluated five. And then when it became apparent that those may or may not work, then we started looking at sites that the city actually owned, which brought the total sites to seven. So as we've gone through that process, we've vetted all these sites. And then the final two that was left was either the Fitz and Rider site, which the owner increased the price by two hundred and fifty thousand to, and then the Capital One site, which is already owned by the city. We were waiting the appraisal to come back. And appraisal came back fifty percent less than what the asking price was for the Fitz and Rider site. And by law, the city cannot pay more than the appraised value for a site. So that's why we're recommending the Capital One site, because it is a site that is already owned by the city. It is, it is an economic development district and is the last site remaining after the seven that we evaluated.
So the, so the council, just, just for clarity, the council did not have to agree to recommend this site to come before us to be, to be added to the agenda?
That's why, that's why we bring, that's why we bring it to the council.
Okay, so then that, then that's the case, let's go back. So correct me if I'm wrong, we had a buy-sell agreement. Let me say this, it was quoted as an option, right? For the Fitz and Rider Road project?
Yeah, it's not, not a buy-sell, it was an option.
So it was an option. So why did we agree to the option when it was already above what it was appraised for?
I don't know, the option was already in place when I came into office. So that, that was, that was, that was already done by the previous administration.
Mr. Cordon, you can speak to that?
It was an option to purchase at the request of the the dollar amount of the owner of the property. But the option is, we agreed to pay that amount, provided it did not exceed appraised value.
So we agreed to pay that amount even though it was above?
That's what the, it allowed us, the option to buy the property at the owner's asking price, provided it did not exceed appraised value.
And all the option did was just said that the owner would wait until the city did whatever due diligence it needed to do. And that, that was the price that it had set. So there was no, there was no agreement to buy the property and there was no agreement to sell it. It was just to wait and and that give the city right of first refusal on that particular piece of property.
When was the appraisal done on this property?
We just got the results back last week.
So with the appraisal process, did we include all stakeholders and constituents around the property?
In terms of what do you mean?
When we get an appraisal done for a project like that, is it true or not true that we're supposed to include all stakeholders in the community? Are they supposed to be a part of this process as well?
No, the appraisal, the appraisal goes, and and we give them the property description. They go and evaluate the property itself. And then they look for comparable pieces of property to see what the values are.
So no one was supposed to be notified of the appraisal of the property?
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of having to do that.
Could we speak to that from a legal standpoint?
Yeah, I've actually never heard, I've probably been involved in upwards of a thousand appraisals. I've never heard of an appraiser having to contact the stakeholders of the property owners. It's generally based upon either the market value approach, the sales approach or the comparable sales approach. So it, I've never even heard of.
So as, so as we are aware, we, we, we're basically saying that we did not have to involve the constituents in the community as far as the appraisal. And you're saying we also cannot pay anything above the appraised value for a property?
It's Article seven, section fourteen in Louisiana Constitution.
So then I'm gonna come back to this. I, I got a couple, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I exceed my time, I'm gonna listen to your orders to stop. But I got a lot of things to talk about dealing with number fourteen because it just was added, if I'm not mistaken, within, within today. So we, we come up with this property. And I know we gonna keep saying the previous administration, the current administration, but they haven't had much change in administration. So much of the administration was fully aware, much of the council may not. But there's three returning council members who were aware of the discussion. I know we gonna say not, they, they didn't agree. But they was aware of the discussion that the only site that was ever discussed for this complex was the Fitz and Rider Road project.
And Mr. Harvey, even if that was the only site, it still had to meet appraisal. That, this is the first appraisal that we've had, I've seen on this site. So this, we audited because of the discussions that was had.
So a couple of weeks ago, we made a comment and we said that we were going to extend the option.
We did.
But someone failed to pay the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was failed, that, when we found out that through Mr. Fandell telling us that the property was up for sale, that the city had not exercised the option, so.
So we didn't have an appraisal at that time?
There was no appraisal. And at your, at your request, we went back and approached the property owner and asked to re-engage that option. He did give us the option instead of the twenty-five thousand, it was for thirty, thirty-seven thousand. And he wanted it for only ninety days, which comes out to about four hundred eleven dollars a day. And so we ordered an appraisal immediately because there had been no previous appraisal. But in doing this option, he refused to stick with the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar price and went, raised about two hundred and fifty thousand to one point two million.
So how, I guess my question, and this is just for me to understand, not for anybody else. How do, how did we make a mistake to not pay a twenty-five thousand dollar extension fee?
I don't know, I wasn't in office at the time when this came up.
So that was done before the new administration? The previous administration didn't pay the twenty-five thousand?
I don't know when the, I don't know when the option was due to be exercised. I took office July first and I found out through Mr. Fandell that the property was back for sale. So yeah, that's not.
So more recently, we also said that we paid to the sum of thirty-seven thousand dollars to the same particular property owner.
The owner said he would, he would, he would give the city an option again for thirty-seven thousand instead of twenty-five. And instead of, I think it was supposed to be six months, he said ninety days. And he, and he raised the price that he would sell by two hundred and fifty thousand.
So we, we paid that thirty-seven thousand dollars before the appraisal or after the appraisal?
Before the appraisal.
Before the appraisal.
As soon as we paid for the option, we ordered an appraisal.
Okay, so this brings me to my next point. And I, it's no secret, I'm, I'm arguing for this to be in my district. I'm, I'm, I'm just being honest because that's what it was always, it always came about being in North Lake Charles area.
Mr. Harvey, that is in District A too.
No, I'm familiar, it's in District A. But we also know there's a, we can differentiate between what's District A of need and what's District A of bells and whistles. And so we talking about the downtown area, that does not coincide with the most underserved and most underutilized part of Lake Charles. So I understand District A, and that's no disrespect to my constituents that are represented downtown. But I'm also talking about the North Lake Charles area, the northern part of the, I understand geographical that that's in my area. My question that I'm saying is, all of a sudden, when we had a transition of power, I feel like this project is becoming a casualty because of the change in administration. And what I find, what I find, I don't find it hard to believe, but is that obviously there's been a lot of conversation with my colleagues up here. My colleagues, none of my colleagues, with the exception of few, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, have chosen to have a conversation with me about Mr. Harvey. Why would you, why, let's, let's talk about why this shouldn't be where you want it to be. There was no respect given to me as the councilman, as the elected official in that area. Instead, everybody had their bells and whistles, why they want to move it, why they want to change it. And I get it, it's a part of politics. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not ignorant to that fact. My point is, instead of saying, let's try to make this project work, we have chased the Hobby Lobby location, we have chased the Kroger's location. We just recently found out, we chased, we chased the old King ransom truck stop location. We had an I-ten location where we want to talk about near the turnaround. But now we're talking about putting in a location that we, current administration, new administrations, old council members had agreed to put in amphitheater right there. So now we're saying we want to move this project to an area. And then we were also given, for the point of record, we were given pros and cons of why that would be a better location that I wholeheartedly disagree with. Because one of the cons you stated was that it could potentially be hurt from the Fitz and Rider Road project construction. Everybody in America know right now that I-ten is gonna be under construction in Lake Charles area for the next seven, eight years. We also said one of the cons was lack of hotels availability in that area. The only hotel that's located downtown right now is the Drake Hotel. Okay, we talked about the traffic as far as MLK, all these cons that was given to me by you guys, right? I just disagree with how can we have circumstantial evidence to prove that that is a bad location? The other question, and I want to put this on record, why not have it on Fitz and Rider Road? Because at one point I was told that we had people who wanted to make investments in it. We clearly have enough money right now to push this project forward in the Fitz and Rider Road area.
I think.
Whether we say, just for, just out of respect, why don't we want this in the area that it was initially stated? Because obviously everybody else voiced their opinion. And obviously people were in agreement to put this on the agenda tonight. So for the point of record, why don't we want it in that location?
Well, Mr. Harvey, if you're asking for us to respond, I will.
This, it's not a discussion, you'll get your chance.
Okay, okay, okay. I, I wanted to make sure I was following the rules.
Let me say, Mr. Harvey, the, the, the determining factor, and you, what, some of the factors that you, that you just listed were factors used to evaluate all seven sites. The, the ultimate factor is gonna be that the site has to be located in the low to moderate income area.
So it doesn't qualify for that?
It does. It is in the low and moderate income area. The, the other factors of Louisiana Constitution, which requires that the city has to, can only purchase property for the appraised value. The Hobby Lobby site, they wanted six million dollars, that was out of, out of line. Kroger site, six million dollars. But all of those were outside the low, low to moderate income area. There was four sites that were located in the low to moderate income area. And all four of those were in District A. They were the Fitz and Rider site, they were the, the Shattuck Street Truck Stop site, the I-ten site by Enterprise and Kirkman and the Hertz site. So those are the four sites that were remaining. The, the highway, the, the Shattuck's Truck Stop site has environmental concerns that, that can't be fixed the, at this timely. The enterprise to Kirkman site has twenty-eight properties that would have to be accumulated. And as you are already aware, that these funds, this thirty million dollars has to be spent by August of twenty twenty-seven, otherwise we're gonna forfeit it. So it became, it became very apparent that it was gonna be hard to find an actual site. So we started, that's what forces us to start looking at sites that are already owned by the city so we wouldn't have those issues. And the only site that survived after that, once the appraisal came back for Fitz and Rider showing that it was, that the price was above the appraised value, was the Capital One site.
I just want to go on record, and, and, and I mean, I might offend somebody, but I totally disagree with the city trying to move this project anywhere else.
Let me, I see, Mr. Harvey, I, I stay right down the street from the site.
I'm not debating you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just simply saying, I'm, I think I'm entitled to voice my own opinion. It's a public meeting. And I want to, I want to make sure, please don't come off as I'm being disrespectful because I'm not being disrespectful to anyone. But I'm very passionate about advocating for people who elected me to be in this position that over a year, I basically have been lying to them based off of what the city of Lake Charles has led me to believe. I'm just being honest with you. So I, I just want to say this.
I just wish an appraisal would have been done, because I think that could have settled that a long time ago.
And I get that. And I'm gonna go back and compare the law because I got some information too, that I want to go back and fact-check myself before I put this out here. But I just want to say, I think it's a disservice to the citizens in North Lake Charles who were vetted. They were told about this project. We had public meetings about this project. And we had several community meetings about this project that once again, we talking about one Lake Charles, but there's no equality in this decision-making. And I just want to make sure all my council members up here, I know you elected to represent your district, but at the same time, we represent all citizens of Lake Charles. And once again, we're telling the most, the people in one of the most underserved areas that, hey, you will once again not get a bigger piece of the pie because of the geographic area where you stay. I want to make sure we clear with that. I know you represent your district, but I'm talking about as one Lake Charles. That's what we keep talking about, right? It's a disservice of the decision that we're making to recommend this. And I want to go on record again and say, I one thousand percent disagree with moving this to a location. Because at one point, we talked about, we asked the previous administration about potentially putting amphitheater in that, that same location that we all agree in saying, let's put a sports complex there. I just want to make sure we clear with that. So everybody can vote how they want to vote, but I'm gonna consistently say I'm strongly against this unless it's saying the Fitz and Rider Road project area.
And Mr. Harvey, if I may, if I may, I would like to say that the, that, that area that you're talking about is not gonna be forgotten. My administration is completely, completely, it is completely committed to the northern part of Lake Charles and the southern part of Lake Charles. But the options that we have is either put this there or take the chance that we just don't get this thirty million dollar grant.
I disagree, but.
I do have one thing I want to interject, just, I'm looking at the actual original option. And it was, it was effective October first, twenty twenty-four for a period of nine months. And so it actually had expired before Mr. Simeon took office on July first, twenty twenty-five. So to the extent that anyone's concerned about the failure of the.
They're notified here. Hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Fandell.
No, the failure, the failure of the exercising of any option to the extent that that's seen as a failure, it took place before Mr. Simeon took office.
And I appreciate you for that information. That's why I was very clear and said, but the previous administration also carried over to the current administration. So some of the people in this room were a part of both administrations, that's all I'm saying.
Right, but I think it's clear to, a point to make for the record that the option had expired before Mr. Simeon was sworn in.
Duly noted.
Yeah.
Mr.
Okay, I want to try to follow the rules and, and I won't have a discussion about it, but I do want to clear up an issue. And Mr. Harvey, I, I appreciate your respect and I want to give you respect because I've gotten to know you and I understand how passionate you are about this project. But when I came in here and I heard about this project, maybe it was my ignorance or maybe I didn't pay attention to everything going on in Lake Charles, but I had no knowledge of a indoor sports complex or Fitz and Rider Road, no knowledge. When I heard about it, thinking of, and this is my opinion, I think of one Lake Charles, it won't fit in my district. So I'm not gonna be selfish and say, put it in District G because we don't even have not one city park in District G. But I'm not gonna do that. I look at the whole Lake Charles, and I grew up, I went to Oak Park, I went to Lake Charles High. I grew up on, on, on the northeast side of town, spent most of my life as a young, as a youngster. I looked at Highway fourteen and thought, I grew up going to Putt Putt and Boulderine and all those things. And it was my recommendation to look at Hobby Lobby or the Kroger's parking lot because I think that Highway fourteen area is dying. And I think this could be a revival for it. So that was my favorite site. And I promise you, it had nothing to do with anybody else's district in opposition to helping out North Lake Charles or anything. It was just my opinion that, hey, if we haven't done this yet, can we look at other locations? Okay, and maybe I should have talked to the entire city council, but it's very difficult following the meeting rules for us to have a conversation about it. So I want to clear that up. It was, it had nothing to do with going against another city council or anything. It was just my opinion that, man, that could really revive that area of Highway fourteen. And I still believe that. But I understand there's some, some, some pros and cons. And I had no idea how much they would want to sell that property for. I don't, I don't think they were really worth that much, but I understand that they want that much. So just to say that, I, I, I respect you, Mr. Harvey, and everybody that has their own opinion. But I want to make sure everybody understands that those, those locations didn't come out of the air. I, I, I came up with some of them because I really believe that in my heart that you could save that area with that. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. And, and, you know, we all have our opinions and we're not always gonna agree, like we've said before. So I just want to clear that up.
And look, I do want, I do want to point out, we're not voting, we can't vote on selection of this site tonight. We, we would just be voting on, putting it on the agenda. And we can put, we can have a motion to put the Fitz and Rider site on the agenda too. So I mean, that's certainly open to anybody who wants to make the motion.
Duly noted, Mr. Bilbo.
Well, I was, I'm in District C. And I'm, me and Mr. Marshall, Matt, the Matts, everybody, I discussed what I told them. I would love it in District C, the Hobby Lobby and the Kroger's parking lot because it would generate business to my area, where you got the hotels, you got the food, you got the places that this will need to survive. For this place to survive, it got to have hotels around, it got to have food. They just not gonna, people not gonna bring kids to a place that's nothing. But I did tell Marshall that I'm fine as long as you don't take it out of District A. I say, but if you're going, if we're going to move it out of District A, hell yeah, I want it in District C. I made an obligation to my people in my district that we deserve good things, but I say, but if you're not going to take it, make sure it's in District A. And I think he left it in District A. I don't know if it's two sides of District A, but to me it's District A. To me, District C is District C. I don't have two sides. So as long as he didn't take it out of District A, I'm fine with it. If the people overpriced, they over, if I try and say, I can't sell a car more than appraisal. I can't sell a house more than appraisal. If he raised his bid up, that he lost, not our loss. I was, I'm the one actually said, hey, man, it's time to stop arguing about this and get through with this project so we can move on to something else. We can't just keep fussing about a gym for six months. Let's get past this so we can really concentrate on the whole one Lake Charles, everything else.
No, you can't go back. That everybody get a chance to speak. You can ask.
Can I ask for a point of clarity?
A point of, point of order?
Yes. I, I just want to make sure I'm not arguing. There's a difference between arguing and advocating. I'm not arguing.
No, we're not arguing, buddy.
I'm just simply saying, I'm just simply stating what we had discussed. I just want to make sure I'm not arguing with anybody.
Okay, you through, Mr. Billbo?
No, I'm not finished yet. Uh, uh, and I really want everybody to understand that. For me, I really want to get past this for everybody. You know, we've been, we got in the council since July first and we've been talking about this is almost October. So whatever decision we just, we made, let's go ahead and make it and move on as a council and go to our next, the next thing we got to come up with. I'm sorry the guy raised the bid up and it don't work out. If it don't work out, let's move on to something better. That's all.
You through, Mr. Billbo?
Yeah, I'm through.
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir. Thank you. A couple of things. I, I understand Mr. Harvey's, uh, statements about, uh, the, the previous administration, the previous council making these decisions. I think it's important to note that the public involvement on this project has been minimal. Um, I've not seen one American press article, KPLC story.
But it hasn't. I'm just telling you.
Okay.
If I check.
All right. Yes, sir. Uh, the public knowledge of this project is minimal. And so I do think operating in a, in a point of transparency with people is very important. Uh, two, the reason that I would be supportive of this project, uh, this project site over the others is primarily because it's an economic development district that returns two cents on every dollar back into that district. We're not getting that on any of the other six sites presented. Um, three, I've heard just since the storms from everybody, from, uh, central Lake Charles, downtown Lake Charles, mid-city Lake Charles and my district, we do not have any gyms. We do not have any fitness centers. We do not have any community centers where we can go and workout. This provides that option. Uh, on the Fitz and Ryder Site, there is a fantastic facility, uh, located just nearly across the street, uh, across from Cumbria Fondelle. Um, that fitness center is fantastic. I wish that we had that downtown. And so I think that this operation would provide that to the downtown residents and mid-city residents. Uh, as a tourism asset, it is most important that this building is visible from the interstate and building something on this site downtown that coming over the bridge, the public can see and go, wow, Lake Charles is really investing in its own future. They are not willing to, you know, just sit back and let things happen for them, but they're being proactive about building their own future is very important. So the visibility is, but also as a tourism asset, we're talking more than fifty percent of this operation is going to be bringing in tournaments from out of town and what services those families? That's hotels, that's restaurants, that's attractions, that's businesses that they can shop in. Well, downtown has most of those assets, most of those amenities. Um, the writers that I bring in during my day job at Visit Lake Charles are most impressed with the shops that are located downtown and the world-class food that they can get access to there. So I think it's really important that proximity to those type of amenities is very close. And finally, I'll just say this. We talk about one Lake Charles, and I think all of us up here really do believe that. We want to advocate for one Lake Charles where everybody has a voice, where everybody has a say. Well, all of us have said at one time or another, the downtown district is like our front porch. That's where people gather. That's where our music festivals are. That's where our cultural festivals are. That's where people meet in the middle. So putting this project in the middle in downtown seems like the best use of that property and the best way to service every resident in Lake Charles, giving them access to this new fitness center, to this new tourism complex.
Good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Weatherford?
Yeah, um, I, I think most, you know, I, I point blank told Mayor Hunter that I was in support of the Fitz and Ryder location. I just didn't think it was a good location for it. Nothing personal. I just look at it from very objective standards and the downtown location is superior. It's accessible to all. Um, easily accessible to all. Um, I agree, visibility from interstate is important. Um, this is for local people to use really about four days a week, Monday through Thursday. And honestly, most weekends, because there's not going to be a tournament there every weekend. Um, I'm not even sure, I, I assume that we can add the, the fitness facility, but originally it was set to be basketball and volleyball courts that you could, you know, that multi-use of that court as well as pickleball. Um, it's very important that we move very, very quickly on this project. Actually, the, the real, the real most timely deadline we have, it's not technically a deadline, but it's a from a standpoint of whether this will be successful or not is we got to get shovel and ground before Lafayette does. Because Lafayette's looking into a similar project on the Cajun Dome property, near the Cajun Dome and Cajun Field. Um, because they know that's a great location for that. And whoever builds this first is going to have it operated by the, the company, a company who can make this endeavor successful. Um, and that's the only way this project can really be the most successful is to have it in the right location that's going to be accessible to all local people as well as people coming in from out of town and spending two or three nights in Lake Charles for these tournaments. So I think that I would, you know, I think this site is, I think it's also fiduciarily responsible. Instead of going out and buying property, we have property that we already own. This property. We also have, uh, one project I suggested that might be good is over by the Power Center because that's property that we own as well. But if the, the two projects, Highway fourteen aren't in a, um, in, in a, um, low to moderate income areas, I can't imagine that the Power Center is either. Um, so I think that for all the reasons that we've talked about, um, I think this is the best location. And I never thought, honest, I never thought it was a good location for amphitheater. I think amphitheater should stay probably where it's at. Um, I was supportive of buying the property. I thought from real estate transaction, fiduciarily, I had to support that. I mean, you're buying a parking garage and land for three million dollars. You can't duplicate that parking garage for three million dollars. Not even close. I, I think it costs you six million to re, to duplicate that parking garage. So uh, so that's where I stand.
That's it, Mr. Weatherford?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fundell?
Thank you. So we're going to put a sports complex on a three million dollar property and that's using citizen money efficiently. Downtown area. I mean, we have potentials to do so. We already own the property, but we paid three million dollars for it. And y'all talking about, um, spending money, throwing away money. And you're going to just throw a little sports complex on a three million dollar investment in downtown Lake Charles and kill the whole area. And that's being responsible. That, I, I don't understand that. Now, when I talked to the owner of this property, when I seen the press sale signs, he indicated he talked with you. Did he talk, did you ever talk with the owner or did he ever make direct a contact with you?
I, I talked to him, but not about this particular project. We were talking about Calcasieu Heights and the senior of activities that would support that particular project.
Said he, he contacted you. The man was upset because he lost money on when, when we, when we didn't extend it. He lost money.
That's, that's not true. I never spoke to that gentleman about that.
How do you lose money?
Hold on, Mr. Weatherford. You, you've had your time. Let, let Mr. Mr.
I never spoke to this gentleman about that.
That was the reason why he said he went up. Because he was a little angry that we didn't treat him respectfully the first time. You know, and, and, and when I contacted him and then we act like, um, so, so the other thing is y'all are saying that no site was ever selected, right?
That's right.
So what did y'all send into the government? Did y'all have a site on that thing? Are you going to have to change the site? Who wrote this thing? Are you going to have to make an amendment and ask the government to change sites?
We're going to have to ask the government to pick any site.
So there was a slide and it said Fitz and Ryder Road, right?
The application said.
The application said Fitz and Ryder Road. Did it or did it not?
I don't know. It did.
It did.
It did.
So a site was selected that said Fitz and Ryder Road. Let's get that straight. The city of Lake Charles made a decision. The site will be Fitz and Ryder Road and they sent the application to the government. Is that right?
It looks, that's the way it happened.
Mr. Fundell, the site.
No, uh, wait, wait.
Okay.
Okay, is that not right? Who, who is the grant writer? Mr. Tisner?
Let's just stay with, with this conference.
All right. So it did go. So we can't say that, that wasn't a site. Now, there was a change in administration and we decided to change. Let's be clear with the people what's going on.
Mister.
It was, huh?
Can I, there was no decision to change anything. I wish at the time that they picked whatever site that they would have done what we did, going out and done an appraisal, because I think at that point the site, uh, you don't know the site. You can pick any site.
They did the contingency.
What I'm saying is, but this appraise, this appraise value didn't even meet the original price. I think that would have been put to bed right off the bat if they had done an appraisal before they submitted the site in the first place.
But they, they had the contingency to do that work. And the government accepted that application and agreed that that was a decent site for that. So they did all their homework. The city of Lake Charles had, had, uh, advisors recommend that site that said it was good. We, we, we established that at a previous meeting that it would pay for itself in five years. We did all the homework as a city, whether it, you were in office or I was in office. The city of Lake Charles made a decision. Am I right? And they did their homework. They didn't do their homework?
I think, I think that, uh, let, let, let me make sure.
Well, you mean you sent something into the government where you didn't really know what you.
Please respond? I think all of these projects that were in there had sites designated. Uh, the, the sites changed. I mean, some of them, the sites changed. The Hope Center started at one place on Second Avenue. It wound up on, it wound up on, on Mullen Street. The, the.
And they made the petition to change.
I can tell you, the government, I don't think the government really cared about what the site was. It just was put into the application.
But don't, don't say that we didn't select a site, a site was selected.
The, 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 the.
And then we changed.
The site that was, the site was not properly vetted. If it would have been vetted, then it would have been.
Why would this not properly vet?
Any, anytime the city has to buy a property, it needs to get an appraisal. It, it can only pay the appraised value under Louisiana constitution.
I understand.
If this appraisal would have been done at whatever time this site was put into whatever, it would have shown that the value, that the, the price that the gentleman was asking for, for a site did not meet the appraised value. It wasn't a valid site from day one, if that's the case.
Okay. I'm, 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 I'm gonna leave that for. The site was selected. Did we ever go back and ask the owner, would he accept the appraised price?
When the owner raised his price by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Mister, uh, Mister Fundell, may I answer your question?
Okay.
Now, if you want to ask what this administration would do. If I go to a person who had a, uh, who, and let's, let me back up. This person, when they built Calcasieu Heights, the previous administration, this council gave them one point five million dollars cash. They also backed up that development with, with CBD money, nineteen million dollars worth. So when this gentleman is going back and saying, I want to raise my price two hundred and fifty thousand, that one point five million plus that one point two you wanted was two point seven. So if this is two point nine million with a garage, that's two point seven million dollars that the city was, was being asked to give. When a person comes up to me and says, I want to jack the price on you because I think I can take advantage of you, I tend not to deal with those people. So no, I did not go back asking him to meet the price because he set his own price. He set it up to one point two million. The, the property appraised at eight hundred and thirty, he was fifty percent higher than the appraised value. There's no reason to even talk to this gentleman about pricing.
But this is, this is a city, not your personal.
I, I am, I am the administration, I'm the mayor of the city and I'm going to do the right thing with the taxpayers' money. If somebody tries to take advantage of our taxpayers, my, my job is to protect the city, the citizens.
Would accept the, the lower bid? Would that be a, a good use of city money or just because he raised his price, we wouldn't accept it?
Oh, well, let me ask this then. There's all, everything is possible and probable, but that's not the facts that we have today.
And the other thing with all of this, my main problem is I can understand us not being able to talk to one another, but I never was told that this site was up for discussion or movement. I never knew that. I got a call from, uh, a councilman telling me, asking me about a different site. But I never knew that this was, it was never discussed from your office that, hey, we're looking at places to put this sports facility to me. I was left out of the whole process.
When we met, when we met, we talked about the, the alternative sites, Mr. Fundell. We talked about all the sites.
No, I assumed we had then wrote the orders for, for the thing. I didn't know that.
No, we looked at now, when, when all the other sites look like they were going to have issues, then we started looking at the places that the city already owned. There was only two sites there.
So let me say, I talked to the owner and he has an appraiser that says the property valued at one point seven million dollars. So that, that, does he get a chance to contend this appraiser? I mean, uh, to, to look at this appraisal and see what it was compared to? I mean, we're doing business with this.
I'm sorry.
We're not going to give them a chance?
You said he has an appraisal?
Yes.
Uh, I'm looking at the city's appraisal, which is a certified appraisal. I mean, I, I've not seen any appraisal from this guy.
Yes. I, I'm just saying that there is a discrepancy. I, and.
That's pretty big, that's a pretty big discrepancy.
Found out about the appraisal, you mentioned that to me. This whole site, I found out about Friday at a meeting with, with you guys. I never knew this site was, was even being considered. And then, um, when did it become, uh, did, when did this site come up?
When we started looking at properties that the city owns.
So it was a part of the original?
No, it never was.
When, when did it come up?
The site that, the site that the city, the city was looking at was the I ten corridor between Enterprise and Kirkman Street.
That one, yes.
But when it became apparent that that, that that site wasn't going to make it, none of the other sites were going to make it. And there was questions about whether the Fitz and Ryder Site would meet appraisal. Then we looked for pri, properties that the city owned. There was two of them. One was at Ward Three on Carbine Road. The other one was this site here at the Hertz, at the Hertz Site.
Okay, so in the original process, this had to be discussed. They had the whole public meetings. Am I right, Mr.?
No, I, I don't think it was any public meetings held in regards to this.
No, nobody, no public meetings?
Not unless you had it in your district. Mr. Harvey had it in his district.
In his district?
Yes.
He had public meetings about the site?
No.
Okay. So the, 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 the other thing is that's my main objection is I don't feel like we were all brought along with this process at all.
I disagree. I think we've been, we've been discussing this at least since I got into office. I mean, this, this, this sports complex, all these disaster recoveries projects have, this is not, I'm not even into my administration platform yet. This is all the previous administration that we're dealing with. And it, and it's exhausting because I'm trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is. I mean, I can be vilified for doing the right thing, but I will be a fiduciary for the taxpayers of this city. I will not pay overvalue for price and break the law doing this.
I'm asking you to pay overprice.
No, you are, you are.
I'm asking you to be, to go through the pro, uh, to at least give us an op, demand an opportunity to accept the lower price. You wouldn't think that would be, uh, in, in the city's back to interest?
So I, I go to a person who had given me one price and he feels he can take advantage of it, so he jacks his price up. And then that price doesn't match it. And I got to go back and say, will you be honest now? And I got to go back and say, will you be honest now? I don't deal with people in bad faith, Mister Fundel. I just won't. Hey, look, I, I understand.
Mayor, you, you through with him?
Uh-huh.
You through addressing, you through down, addressing the mayor?
Yes.
Okay. You had something you wanted to say, Mister Mayor?
No, I'm done.
Mister Cardone, you had something you wanted to say?
Just, just for clarifications, uh, the Fitzarada site was on the application. It was not, has not been approved by OCD and it was subject to quite a few other conditions, including appraisal. So yes, it was on the application, but it was not an approved site and it had been vetted through OCD.
Okay. So I'mma take it back to why I don't want this on this agenda. I'll go back to the first part. Originally, you said, Mayor, that the lapse was, and Mister Stoops confirmed that the lapse happened on the previous administration, correct?
Before he took office.
Before he took office. On August the twelfth, we sat right here where you said that the money was not paid. You audited, it wasn't paid, we didn't know why. You said you would rectify that situation and make it happen, okay? That was on your administration that took responsibility for that action, am I correct?
No. I found out that the, that the money had not been paid when Mister Fundel told me, that's what I was saying.
But, but on eighth, eight month, twelfth day in an, an agenda meeting, you acknowledge that we dropped the ball, we didn't pay the money. You said you would make it right, you didn't?
I said I would make it right, yes.
Yeah, and, and you said that the money wasn't paid.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I said.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. So from that point on, that's where everything gets out of whack. Because at that point, we had an option to buy, at that point. At the beginning of this, 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 this thing, when listening to my colleagues, I heard due diligence and fiduciary. That means being responsible.
Right.
Last week, we had meetings, like you said. Last week, I told you, Mister Stoops, and everybody else in that room, that there's a situation that you can pay more than an appraisal bid when you're dealing with CDBG monies. Did we ever look into that?
Yes, we did.
And y'all found out that it's not so?
Only if you re-
You meet the LMI threshold?
No. If you're buying someone's home and using federal funds, you pay the appraised value for the property, because that meets the constitution, but you also pay for their relocation, rental. That's the only time you can go above appraised value. This is not the purchase of, of a, of a particular home or anything else. This is just a straight property purchase, so Louisiana Constitution controls.
Okay. I'm going to ask you today to go back to the consultants and ask them to research, is there a way, when you're dealing with CDBG monies, to go above the bid price? Is that too much to ask?
Sure.
I mean, we can do it. I mean, I, I, the, the regulations exist under the Uniform Relocation Act solely to give someone assistance to relocate who needs to find a home in a suitable place. We're talking about vacant property that's unused. The regulations do not allow us to go give somebody relocation assistance that doesn't need relocation assistance.
Okay.
We, the, the constitution clearly controls, we cannot pay above appraised price for the property. We cannot use relocation funds because the relocation standards under the regulations don't apply. I don't mind asking a consultant about that, but I also know how to read the regulations.
And I, and I'm not disrespecting you, don't. So don't test my intelligence when I ask, can you look and see? Y'all giving me answers here and you, you admitting that you never talked with the-
Since we had the last meeting.
Yeah, but you didn't go to the consultants and consult?
We'll, we'll do that.
Mister Marks, Mister Marks, we will do that. And I know when we left the meeting that day, I took a picture of what you had. I gave it to Mister Stoops and I said, I just want to confirm. He, he looked up the law.
And he looked up the uniform what I gave him. And I went back and I rechecked and I found out that I had given you the wrong information. That's why I'm asking you again.
We will follow up.
Okay, that's it. With this, I want you, each one of the council members to take one of these. These are from the HUD website. And it has certain things, you'll see where I have highlight. I'm not going to go into it right now because we already going into town. But it's on the, the www.hud.govment relocation. There are certain things in here that talks about exactly what we're going through. Uh, I'mma go back to something Mister Fundel said. Mister Mayor, before you took office, you criticized the last administration about purchasing that property, uh, over there. You said that we shouldn't, correct me when I say something wrong. You said that we should not use government money to buy private property or get into private property business. Is that what you said?
Right.
We paid, and I'mma correct you, Mister Fundel, we paid a little less than two point nine million dollars for that particular piece of property.
That's correct.
In the meeting last week, you told me, you said the property is going to be small. You said that. The property on Fitzarada is nine point six acres of property. I know from experience on this council, Mister Cardone, you correct me if I'm wrong. When we dealt with the, the parking garage that's on the beach right now, that garage started out one way. When we got through dealing with that garage, we spent maybe six extra million dollars on that garage.
Yes, sir.
This garage over here is old. It went through the storm, it went through the hurricanes. We don't know what we're going to find. We're assuming it's going to be suitable. But we're going to put a thirty million dollar building on a two point nine million dollar piece of property and rely on parking at the civic center with overflow and a five hundred car, um, old garage that was part of the other building. Just want to put that out there. We, we had a option. I too spoke with the owner. The owner did say, he talked to you and your words, now, I'm not saying he's telling the truth, I'm telling you what he told me. He said, the mayor said, we're not interested in this project anymore. That was before any appraisal, that was before anything of this nature come about. I'm just telling you what was told to me.
That is totally untrue.
Okay.
But you, I, I want the record to be clear. That is totally untrue.
Okay. And I'm just telling you, like I said from the beginning, I talked to the owner, this is what he said. This is why I'm in agreement with the city and the owner should sit down and talk because it's a miscommunication and somebody's not telling the truth. And I would like to be revealed, whether it's him or, or us as the administration.
Mister, Mister, Mister-
Go ahead.
I can tell you, uh, I'm, I'm just not in the, I'm not in the habit of negotiating or talking to anybody that calls me a liar.
That's your personal, you said fiduciary.
I said, I said this. The only time I spoke to this gentleman was about Calcasieu Heights and that he was going to open up a senior citizen place. And I took him over to the MLK Center to say, look, we've got activities here that's going to help support your development. We never once talked about this other piece of property. We never once talked about the sports complex.
I'm telling you what he said, I said that from the beginning. If he's lying, then he's lying. I'm just telling you what he told me.
Okay.
The other thing is, on eight twelve, you stated in the, in the, um, in the agenda meeting that an appraisal had been done for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
You remember that?
Yes.
When was that appraisal?
That was a twenty nineteen appraisal by the previous owners.
Okay. So you're telling me in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty-five, the property is worth the same?
No. The property in twenty nineteen was thirteen acres.
Uh-huh.
Thirteen point nine four acres.
Thirteen acres at eight hundred thousand?
Thirteen point nine four acres.
Thirteen point nine. So you're telling me nine point six is eight hundred thousand now?
Mister Marks, I'm not telling you anything.
No, no, I'm just saying, I don't mean like you telling me.
No, that's the appraiser, not me.
I know that he paid eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for those thirteen acres.
Okay. Okay. Now, moving forward, do you have the appraisal that you can present to us now? Because last week you didn't have it.
It's, it's being finalized. We, we did, we got the preliminary, we got the preliminary numbers from the appraiser. They're putting the formal report together.
Uh-huh. And how long will that take?
I have no idea.
No idea? Okay. But we don't have the appraisal in hand?
Not the written appraisal.
Okay. But we, we were told that the appraisal value was eight hundred thousand?
Eight hundred thirty thousand.
Eight hundred thirty thousand. Okay. In last week's meetings, I asked you about other sites. I asked the same question Mister Harvey asked. I'm listening to Mister Young, Mister Sun-, Mister Young and Mister Weatherford talk about Midtown. How it should grow, how it's all this and all that. But year after year, generation after generation, Lake Charles has neglected everything north of two ten. But let me finish, that's my opinion. I'm fifty-eight years old and I got good sense.
You're talented, yeah.
So I, we, you can drive, I can drive from one end of town to the other and we can see a, a vast difference, right? We come to a legacy project and we point out that it could change economic value. We got the enterprise extension coming. We got all of these things that could potentially help another part of the city. But yet, when we turned in that application with Fitzarada, it was good enough to send to the government. It was good enough to get this project passed. And now we got to come back, just like Mister Fundel say, we got to come back and amend this. We got to go through this whole process again for the, the site, the, the Hertz site. We, we just assuming the Hertz site going to pass. It may not pass. It may pass.
It may not.
It, but it may pass. But we got to go through this whole process again. And when we talk about fiduciary, how does it make sense for us to be appalled at a one point two million dollar price tag on nine point six acres, but we all right with a two point nine piece of property holding the same thing?
Because the property was already owned by the city.
It doesn't matter, we paid for it. We already owned it, but we paid for it. This is invested money. If we were to sell that, that piece of property on the market today, it would go in upwards of three point five million dollars. Period. Not only did we do that, we had a tentative amphitheater designed to be on that same site. So with this one thing, we killing an amphitheater and we killing a two point nine million dollar piece of property. With this, let, let me finish, Mayor. For, with this one decision, this one decision, we even had a situation where the visitor, where you work at?
Visit Lake Charles.
Visit Lake Charles said, we'll give you five million dollars. Several councilmen said it. Now, whether or not it's true, they said, Visit Lake Charles will give you five million dollars if you put it next to the highway. If that's not influence, I don't know what is. We had a situation where we met, the last administration, I don't know if Mister Cardone was there. I don't want to put you in the room and you wasn't there. But we had a meeting with Ward Three about the, uh, the sports center coming on Fitzarada. Ward Three stated, that would be perfect. Because the intent of Ward Three is to turn Martin Luther King into more of an elderly type facility. He said that would help to take the pressure off of him. One of the agreements that was made, that we simply wash over, is that Ward Three had to put a swimming pool in North Lake Charles. They had to put two or three. We as a city agreed to build that swimming pool that's going on at, at Gospot Park right now in lieu of the partnership with Ward Three. That's never been mentioned. Nobody ever said anything about that since we've been talking about all of this. That swimming pool was a, was a, a good faith effort for a five million dollar partnership. That, that's already took place, we can't get that money back, okay?
Mister, can I say one?
Yes, sir.
With respect to Ward Three and Visit Lake Charles, I've spoken with both of those entities. Uh, Visit Lake Charles was going to support this project no matter where it went.
That ain't what the councilman said.
But that, and I talked to them. I said, look, you can't pick and choose those kind of games. You're going to either support a project or you're not. And they said, we'll support the project wherever it goes. Ward, Ward Three, I spoke to Ward Three. I told them what we, what we're going to propose and they're, they're okay with that location.
And, and I commend you for that, Mayor. But it doesn't take back the intent. They got it where they want it now. They'll say anything. If, if you, just like what you said about a person coming to you and saying, I want it for eight hundred thousand and they raise it to one point two. I got an organization that came to us and said, we're going to give you five million if you put it next to the highway. I can't trust them now. I can't trust them. What, what's the reason they're going to give me the five million now?
Can I give you just an insight to how I think?
You, you-
My thought is this, we've got thirty million dollars for, for a recreation and sports complex that we have to spend this money by August of two thousand and seven. If Fitzarada is not a qualified site because it didn't meet appraisal and we do not use the Capital One site, we have no other sites. This administration would never give thirty million dollars back to the federal government that was hard earned from what we went through through these hurricanes.
And I'm not asking you to-
I'm going to find, my recommendation is based upon the fact that we vetted seven sites.
But we didn't vet the site.
We did, we vetted seven sites and the, and the only one that's left, the only one that's left is this site here.
Marshall, Mayor, didn't you just tell me, when I asked y'all last week, to go and talk to the consultants about, is there a possibility of going above the bid? Y'all said y'all didn't do it? So it's not vetted?
We'll do it, we'll do it.
It's not vetted. But, 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 but what I want to know is, if it does come out, because I asked you this in the last meeting last week. I say, if this all works out some kind of way and we're back to Fitzarada, I even, oh, in these documents that I gave y'all, one of the requirements of this program and us receiving the money, it states that you must send an invite to the owner to be present at the appraisal. I told y'all that last week, y'all said no. I went through this, we went through this with the Hope Center. One of the requirements was, we had to send an invite. Now, whether or not they come, that's on them. We had to send an invite to the people who own the property so that could be there. Because it states in these documents that I just gave you, that the owner has the opportunity to be there with the appraiser so that he can tell the appraiser something about the property that could possibly give it value. We didn't do that. So when they go back and check these boxes, if that hasn't been done, what happens then?
Does that come from the relocation act? That's, that's talking about, talking to the owner of a home?
No, that comes from these projects that we got. We just went through this with the Hope Center. The exact same thing. Had to follow, it's one of the boxes that got to be checked. Invite them, whether or not they come, that's on them. But that's a box you got to check. So if we don't check those boxes, we could potentially fail.
If the appraisal had checked out, he would have to comply with the Uniform Relocation Act and go talk to him. But the appraisal's four hundred thousand dollars below the, the price.
But you didn't, but you didn't reach out to him to go do the appraisal?
The whole point of the appraisal was to find out if it's viable to move forward.
Yes, so, so, so what you're saying is y'all did an appraisal to check and see if it's all right?
That is correct.
So that makes that appraisal-
He get, as soon as he gave us his price, as soon as he gave us his price, we ordered an appraisal because I said, I, this is, this is unusual. And, and, look, I hear what you're saying, but what's the, what's the alternative? I mean, what, what's the alternat-
Mister Mayor, could we just stay on task? I'm, I'm just asking. Because you did an appraisal prior to everything.
I did an appraisal which should have been done when the, when this site was first proposed.
And what you should have done with your appraisal is send out an invite for him to come to your appraisal. It's nothing in that paperwork say, you can do an appraisal and then go find out. If they check that box-
Property verifies.
Okay. Well, all I'mma say is, check with the consultants. There's rules to this.
So, so I, I go, there's a guy that says, I think, because the information's been put out there, I think you're going to need my property. I'm, I'm going to increase the price by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you're saying that I also need to basically, uh, invite him to everything and say, look-
No, no, Mayor, that's not what I'm telling you and I don't want you to convolute it. I am saying that the city of Lake Charles, when you go to purchase somebody property in these CDBG funding projects that we doing, before you do an appraisal, you need to send an invite to the landowner to be present. That's what I'm telling you. No matter how you convolute it, no matter how you try to shake it, there's boxes we got to check when we do these projects. We did it with the Hope Center, when you was owners about the Hope Center that you didn't want in North Lake Charles, that was done.
I did not say that.
That was done.
I did not say that.
That was done. Mayor, listen.
I will say this.
Listen.
I, I think, I think we, we can continue this all day long. At the end of the day, we're recommending this site, I think it's up to you guys to make a decision.
Okay, it is. And, and, and it's up to you to let me talk like I'm letting you talk. And the problem here is, we're forgetting about people.
No, we never forget about people.
Mayor, we're forgetting about people when we have an underserved community. An underserved community. Y'all keep talking about all the things that North Lake, I mean, that Midtown has, Downtown has, what are they lacking?
I live in North Lake Charles, I live right by it.
That doesn't mean nothing. You can live there and not be for it. Go. You, you don't have to argue. It's about giving, you don't want to give me my respect, I listen to everybody here. Didn't say a word. Didn't say a word. And now you are frustrated, three meetings you walked out on, on us.
I'm just telling you that I live right down the street, I live in North Lake Charles.[1676.61]
That does not mean nothing, Mayor. I live somewhere. That does not mean nothing. All I'm simply saying is, we need to do things the right way. You need to understand, you coming to us to ask us to take a two point nine million dollar piece of property that we have a problem paying one point two for and use it because we already own it. We paid for that. We paid for that property. That's not a good fiduciary.
Uh, just, just for clarity, we did pay for it. We paid right under two point nine million, but we did not pay above appraised value when we bought it.
I'm not saying you did.
Okay, I'm just saying the appraised above that.
What, but what you paid, what we paid for it was the value, correct? We didn't pay over what they was asking.
We paid below, we paid below it.
Below, okay. But that is what it's worth.
Understood.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter whether we paid below or not. It's worth two point nine million dollars. So, we come here today to, we put something on the agenda that we didn't consult with the whole council with. We didn't, usually we sent out for votes. I know you had your four votes. That's obvious. But I didn't get a call. You got a call? You got a call? No. So, this can't be one Lake Charles. It can't be.
I, I didn't get a call.
I'm gonna leave it at that.
I didn't get a call.
I'm gonna leave it at that.
I found out today it was going on the agenda this morning.
Same. You didn't have to get a call 'cause you already knew.
No, I haven't.
Did you vote for it?
Well, no one voted for it yet. We haven't voted for anything yet.
Voted to put it on the agenda?
No.
There was no vote to put it on the agenda?
No, it hasn't been.
Hasn't voted. That's what, that's what we're talking about right now. Hey, hey, I have more to say. I have more to say.
Say I haven't gotten a call.
Hey, I have more, I have more to say.
No, you can't. Because Robert's order states that everybody get a chance to talk, and once they're through, they're through.
You dominated this conversation.
No, I listened to you as much as you wanted to talk. You talked. I asked you, "Are you through?" You said yes. That's the rules. That's why I've made strategic efforts to follow the rules.
Okay, that's fine. But you've dominated this conversation.
Okay, if that's the way you did, you didn't have a problem when they, when this was the rules before? Why is it not? I asked.
No, usually, usually there's a given tape. We, we don't get put in a box that you have to say, you say, and then you're done.
No, no, no. Because guess what? It wasn't a box when this got put on the agenda.
It's not only, it's not only, you, you, you.
I checked with legal. If I did something wrong, legal tell me.
No, you haven't. But, but you've asked that you do not want it on the agenda so that precipitates that there has to be a vote taken to put this on the agenda.
Right, and a discussion. And everybody gets a right to talk and a discussion, whether or not they want to. But they're limited in what they can do. We don't go back and forth in this vote.
We have in the past.
Yes, but with a different vote in a regular meeting. In this one, for this vote, that's why it went down the line. Read Robert's order.
I, I, I'm not, but you have had way more time than any of us.
You had the opportunity to talk. I gave, and you a talker. I gave you the opportunity. I asked you, "Are you through?" You said that. I didn't shut you up.
Okay, may I actually say I, I wanna hold my comments for later, but, okay, that's fine. Let's just move and vote either to have this on the agenda or not. I'm, I moved the question.
The question is on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Hand vote.
I intend to be a hand vote because I don't have access right now.
All those in favor? All those opposed? So carried. It'll be on the agenda. Moving on. Mr. Bilbo, you got anything?
I'm ready to go home.
So you don't have anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Miss Yon?
No.
Mr. Harvey?
No. I do. Um, I'd like us to take a look, um, the safety discuss brought this back to mind. Look at having a cross, whether a crosswalk is married on Sail Road, uh, I would think east of Weaver Road. There's a lot of, um, I've been taught that there's children that are walking from there, those neighborhoods on the north side of Sail Road, across Sail to get to Barbour High School. Just see if it, if, if it warrants it.
Hey Craig, it's not going out of order, right? I didn't pass my turn.
Speak if you want to.
Uh, I had a picture on Jan Street. I owe this to my constituents. I made several attempts. I went out to this neighborhood three times. Uh, the guys at Public Works been complaining that they can't do their job because these guys intentionally park in an area that's not theirs. And when Mr. McGarry is sending people out, they're gone. But as soon as they know by the time they coming, they come back. First, they was parking one car. I went and talked to them personally. Now they parking two cars. It's like a one-way. And Public think they can't get the trash, they can't get anything. So I asked them, "Could they not park there?" 'Cause their driveway is long enough to fit their cars in their driveway. So now they parking two cars. So now I want to see what it takes to put a no parking sign so I can get them cars towed when they park there because it's blocking the street from the neighbors and the dump truck. The, where they trying to spray to clean the ditch out, the, the, um, Public can't get down there. They can't make a turn.
My suggestion would be to place an item on the agenda.
That's right. I'm gonna try and find how you do that. I know we didn't had a, I wanna say the terminology right. We wanna get that.
Want to put an ordinance on, for no parking on Jan Street, both sides?
On that side. Other side is houses. And it just where you see is where they parking the cars. That mean the trucks can't do anything, can't turn, they can't do nothing with those vehicles there. They got to back in and then get out.
Point of clarity, you, you said something, don't we have, if we want it to be a towaway zone, we have to clarify, we have to make that part of the ordinance as well. So if you want it to be.
Well, just no parking. So at least when they call the cops, they can say, "Why are you parking here?" And whatever it got to do, the neighbors start complaining again, so they called me.
If it pleases the council, there is, uh, in the parking zone, if they continue to park there and it becomes a problem, there is a, a clause where you can tow somebody. Y'all absolutely can include that in the ordinance, but if somebody either doesn't pay the ticket or they receive certain number of, of violations in a certain amount of time, it exists to answer that question about.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause I really say, maybe you wanna make, 'cause, you know, they're picking up trash once a week. I assume you're talking, it's city garbage and trash. They're picking up once a week if they're in the way. I mean, we do send people back out. That's one, that's probably the major advantage of us doing it instead of farming it out, is that, you know, a private company is gonna say, "Hey, too bad. We're picking it up next week." Um, we don't really wanna do that more than we have to, but that's an accommodation we make to, to the citizens. So it's just a thought. You may wanna make it towaway zone where we could get them out of the way quicker. It's, I don't know how bad the problem is. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's what we want.
You through, Mr. Bilbo?
Yeah.
You sure?
As long as they, I did it right. I just wanted to document.
Go ahead, Mr. Fundel.
Um, I, I don't know how to do this, but, um, I'd like, uh, the appraisal, a copy of the appraisal.
As soon as we get it, absolutely.
A resolution that we send it to the owner of that property that he can review it and have time to object to the appraisal. And he, he does have a right to, um, bring up objections to the appraisal. Uh, he can look at it and see what the property was compared to. And, uh, do I need to make that a resolution to make sure that happens?
You don't have to. We'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah.
We'll do that. We give him the copy of the appraisal.
We'll send a copy to all the council and to the owner.
And if he has the option to, to, uh, to review, to, to object to the appraisal, and we go through that process.
That's a resolution, yeah.
That gives him the right to, 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 uh, to challenge that appraisal.
Are you saying outside of him coming to the public meeting and stating his objection, or you want, I'm, I'm not quite following.
There's, there is a natural process where you can, you can object to appraisal. Normally it's with a bank, where you can, you can go back and do it. But, yeah, he can come back to the council if he has anything.
We'll send it to him.
And we reopen.
Well, Mr. Fundel, why don't we do this? Why don't we get you a copy of the appraisal? We'll get him a copy of the appraisal, and then y'all can take it from there.
And just for clarity, he's talking in the, the city councilman's portion of it. I'm not extending his time. You through? Oh, you?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's it.
Mr. Vizino? Mr. Harvey?
So, one more, one more. So if that appraisal is challenged and that site comes back on the agenda.
I believe you'd have to put a resolution on to do that. That's what I'm saying. Let's get it to you guys and y'all can decide what you wanna do afterwards. Whether you wanna put a resolution on.
Okay, I want to put a resolution that we do, we don't, we don't proceed.
Well, you gotta wait till you get, he's saying wait till you get the, uh, the appraisal and you can view it. And then if you have any objections, you can come back with a resolution.
No, I, I wanna make a different resolution that we don't proceed without the owner having a chance to review that. We don't proceed with anything.
Do y'all have a timetable of when you expect the final result?
We'll, we'll contact them. We've asked them to get that to us as soon as possible.
Find out tomorrow, yeah.
So will it be before the next meeting? You anticipate it?
I, I don't know. If you wanna put a resolution on, Mr. Fundel, and you got the votes to do it, put it on. Whatever you're looking for.
Yes, I, I, I make a resolution until we resolve the, the, uh, appraisal issue that we don't move forward with anything on this.
We can formulate a, a resolution with Ms. Renee, and then we can, you need four votes to get it on the agenda after today.
After today.
Yes. You through?
Mm-hmm.
It comes on next week.
Mr. Vizino, Mr. Harvey? Uh, I have, I wanna know what the, um, what the status is of the, um, traffic advisory for Fourth Avenue? We were supposed to do a traffic study?
You just like Fifth Avenue?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth Avenue. Ms. Wendy, you, you, you're new, so I just bring you up to speed. We, I asked for a traffic study for Fourth Avenue between Preon Lake Road and Oak Park Boulevard. I've been getting complaints from residents that it's, it's a high-speeding area. And we've had this, if we go back and check the records, I think we may have done a study before. But there's no stop signs in that stretch. And people are speeding down that street.
Fourth Avenue and.
Fourth Avenue between Oak Park and Preon Lake Road. You know, in the twenties?
Okay.
Yeah.
In the twenties, okay. Yes, I'm, I'm gonna yield to.
I'm not familiar with that traffic study. Um, I think we've had a departure recently. Um, this week I will get in touch with the traffic department. I'll see where it's at in the queue. If it's completed already, you'll hear back some, you'll hear something from me. If it's not, we'll get it on the schedule.
Okay. Can we just do a fresh one? 'Cause it, it may change. I don't know.
It's possible. I'll, I'll see where it is and I'll let you know where it's at.
Let me just, let me just say something on that as well, too. I know that one of the, one of the things we've kinda backed up with a few of our traffic studies that we were, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, we're also ordering new boxes to go out 'cause we are limited. Because we are doing a lot of traffic studies at the request and, at your request, and so we are limiting those, those things. I don't know right off the top of my head how many, but we are ordering more. So we are taking some of those, uh, uh, requests and backing them up until we can get some more in.
Whenever you come up with it, that's all I, I can tell the constituents. We waiting on it.
Okay.
All right. The, um, there's a recovery house on Twenty-third Street. I don't know the exact, uh, address. Mr. Rubin knows it. We've had some complaints about it before. Residents using the restroom in the yard, uh, loud noises, uh, different things like that. I, if I'm not mistaken, we put some rules in place for recovery houses in the city of Lake Charles. So I would like for us to go back and revisit and maybe, I don't know if it's property standards or who goes to the recovery houses, but we wanna check on those. And it's reports that it's female and men living in the same house.
Do you know what Cross Road is by?
Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue.
Yeah. I have one question, Mr. Cardone, or, or Mayor, or Mr. Stoots. Another question. Professional services agreement. A couple of weeks ago, I asked you about A and E agreements. Professional service agreements. How do we choose those?
You mean like engineers or?
No, no, that's, that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's A and E, right?
Well, the, they're all professional service agreements. An architect agreement, engineering agreement, they're all professional service, they're all professional service agreements. We do an A and E agreement, which is based on a job. And then we also have task orders that are smaller jobs that's done by the hour with a notice exceed, exceed.
So when we have one, and I don't wanna discuss it because it's on the, the agenda.
Yes, sir.
But we have one coming up next week. How do we? I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm having a misconception because some of them seem like professional things like an attorney, and then others seem like, uh, hands-on work, like architects and different things like that. But they are all lumped together as professional services?
They, you know, generally, I, I'll address that if I can. I'm not sure I'm gonna perfectly answer your question, but generally in the law, the way anything that is regulated under Title Thirty-seven, like lawyers, accountants, engineers, um, doctors, that's what generally falls within professional services. I don't know specifically if that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I'm asking.
The things that are regulated by Title Thirty-seven, and there's, it's a pretty long list. You can go look it up and Google it.
So, but it is a separation between A and E, correct? Uh, no.
Well, and, and A and E is a type of professional service agreement. It's an, A and E stands for Architectural Engineering Agreement. So it's a type of professional agreement.
So do we?
And a task order is a type of professional agreement based on hourly rates.
And I asked you this before, but I'm gonna ask you again.
Okay.
What is the cutoff between coming to the council and the mayor being able to do it by himself? Like, it's, it's some agreements that the mayor can give out. He don't have to come to the council.
I think what you're talking about is, when each year when we adopt the budget and do the capital budget, we also put items on the agenda that say allows us to enter to professional, uh, uh, service agreements to address those projects that y'all have already approved under the capital budget.
So it's not a threshold?
Every year, every year we put those on.
So it's not a threshold? The mayor doesn't have
No, sir. There's no threshold.
to do something because it's below a threshold?
No, sir. Not, not on PSA.
You may be, Mr. Marks, if, there is a certain level of settlement authority and litigation that can be done with the mayor's office. I don't know if that's what you're speaking to.
I just always was told that the mayor can make, um, certain contracts below a certain threshold. Or like, there's a threshold that triggers the council vote. No? We vote on five dollars just like we vote on five hundred thousand. Correct?
See, I'm trying to follow you, Mr. Marks. I'm sorry.
I don't know how to say that.
Okay.
The, the, the mayor has authority. Does the mayor have authority? Let's say a contract needs to be signed. It's only two hundred fifty thousand.
The mayor, the mayor does have some authority. There's a, there's certain authorities. Some of them is, is when, when is the public, uh, works threshold? There's authority there. And there's also what can the mayor sign? What is his authority without having to come to the council?
Right.
That's probably what you might be getting at.
That's what I'm thinking.
How about if I get that to you tomorrow?
All right.
There, there's a set dollar. I think that's what you're asking.
The public bid law and, and the ordinance interact. I think that's what you're referring to. Certain things do not have to go out for public bid under state law.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I believe it's actually fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, but, yeah.
What I'll do is we'll get you the, uh, for public bids, also the threshold on quotes and the mayor's authority.
Okay. Any, anything else from the council? At this time, we're at the session where we have the community speak. We have two cards. One is Gary Jackson. Appreciate your patience, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
State your ad, name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Gerard Jackson. The address, my, my new address is twenty-three thirty-five Klein Street. But I'm here to talk about eleven oh three Fournette Street. One more time. Back here last year, uh, on my mother's house on Fournette Street, they put the little orange or red card on it. So it was up for demolition or something. So I heard from a neighbor that if you go to the city, you're disabled, you're sixty-five years old. If you go to the city, they got a program in place that could help you. So I went up to the, came up here, fifth floor, and they said, "Sure, we could help you. We'll tear your house down and build you another." But the property gotta be in your name. So I called Mr. Hester. The guy's name that was on the card. I said, "Look, Mr. Hester, I need more time because I'm trying to get the property in my name." Uh, because they had eighteen houses in that block back then. But my mama's house was the only one remaining. So I tried to get at least one built in that, in that neighborhood. So when they finished over there at Southwest Law Firm, they called me. I was so excited. I got my papers in my name. Brought them up to, to the city on the fifth floor, say, "Hey, look what I got. When can y'all get started? You don't, uh, qualify." Y'all told me to get, get the papers in my name. The house is in my name. Y'all told me, get the papers in my name. The house is in my name. They, I'm sorry to tell you, they tore your house down two days before, ago. So I was robbed of that. But I'm gonna tell you something about the people that own that property, okay? My grandfather, he is one of the guys that volunteered, put his life on the line for this country and went served in World War I. When he came back, heard about his friends being taken off a ship of soldiers. Their feet never hit land. That was beaten, hung, and all that stuff. And he, all he did was cry his whole life. Mama, why, why Papa crying? He, 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 he don't feel good. He didn't feel good every day because of the tears came coming out his eyes. So after I got older and I start to realize what was going on, you know, I said, I'm gonna get involved. Now see, when he first went, he was denied at Jackson Barrage. They wouldn't train no blacks. He was denied. But soon, somebody trained the black soldiers that went over there. And, you know, that's that's what happened to them when they got back, you know? So so I don't know if it's, if his tears was for what he went through and to see his fellow soldiers succumb, you know, for fighting a war that he should never fought. But they helped out the country. And the country didn't have their back. When they got back, the, hold on just a minute. I got it right here. I wanna read something for you. Excuse me for a minute. Anyway, I can't find it. But anyway, he was one of the men that he cried when my, when my great-grandfather come around, time, one minute remaining. Okay, uh, yeah, his grand, his daddy worked for the FBI, my mama told me. And when he would come to the house, shh, he would, he would cry a lot because his job was to recruit other black men in the black community to snitch. So he got a lot of people in the black community hung. My grandfather cried because he didn't want his, 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 uh, family to get hung. That we didn't know nothing about, you know? So my mother, she worked at the health unit 23 years, and she lost two kids, 86 and 87, took, uh, uh, they, they was killed. So she was in a, a weight, you know, that couldn't be saved. But she had one friend, Mary Ellen Fundel Semian, came, got her out of all that misery she was in, bought her up to this building on the 10th floor, and she worked her whole life up there on the 10th floor. And, you know, it bothers me because how can you do that to your own, one of your own?
Mr. Jackson, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You said the house was torn down.
Yes, sir. The house was tore down and, uh, they tore it down.
It had a red tag on it.
It had a red tag on it.
Did you get any communications saying that, hey, look, your house will be torn down on such and such date?
Yes, sir. They bought me back in here February the 27th. They told me they'll give me 30 days to find my own demolition company. I didn't find none, so I came back.
But at that time, did you tell them that you had the name, the house in your name?
It, it, no, I didn't tell them it was in my name at that time.
Okay. See, that that's where the disconnect is. Once the process gets started, we, you still got time in that time to get the thing in your name and, you know, prevent it.
Well, that's what I tried to tell Mr. Hester. I say, look, my grandfather died. My mama died. She never bought it from his name to hers. So I had to do a double succession. And by the time I got everybody to sign, that's when I came up with the papers.
But was the house in bad condition?
The house was in very bad condition. I could see the little things in the ceiling, the whole ceiling, the floor down, the roof like this here, the floors. I had to put plywood to walk on the floors to keep from going through.
That's, that's what triggered it, Mr. Jackson.
What?
The, the fact that it was in a dilapidated position, uh, situation? Because of safety, we had to go through with the process. So now it wasn't, I don't think, correct me, Mr. Stoots, I don't think we did anything, we followed the process and you were notified.
Yeah, but if Mr. Hester knew what I was doing, he would, he would have saved the house until I got my papers.
Okay.
Two days later, after I got, before I got the papers, they tore it down. He didn't give me a chance. And this was some prominent people that own that property.
I understand.
Mr. President.
Now, she worked.
Speaker's time has expired.
Yes, sir.
She worked the whole tenure of Randy Roach on the 10th floor. She, she would come and tell us, oh, about the new project they had for our area, North Lake Charles.
Do this for me, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Tizano is over there. He can explain to you the process and tell you why things happen the way they happen.
Yeah, I understand the way they happen, but it shouldn't have happened that way. I was cheated out of, 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 of a house. I can't build a house.
I understand what you're saying.
But I've been taking care of the property for eight years now. I gotta cut a yard and never get a house on it because of y'all mistake. I told that man that I needed some time. He tore it down anyway.
Yeah, it made a difference.
Mr. Ms. Alice Manning Bowers? She left? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mayor? Ms. Stoots?